Got a call to order our city council meeting. We're going to begin with the pledge of allegiance, so let's stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great honor of its citizens. One nation under God, indivisible, created for all.
All the roll, please.
All right, Alderman Beebe.
Present.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Present.
Alderman Sheehan.
Here.
Alderman Hallett.
Here.
Alderman Pareto Munoz.
Here.
Alderman Demus.
Present.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Present.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Switek.
Here.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Avinia Soto.
Present.
Alderman Marano.
Here.
Alderman Myers. Thank you.
Okay. We do have a forum. We're going to begin our time with the public comments and I'll just remind everyone that the public comment, we ask that it be respectful. There are important things that we care about and maybe feel passionate about and you are welcome to speak about those things. We just ask that we be respectful of one another in that process so that we can have a good and fruitful dialogue together. We're gonna begin. Point of order, three minutes. As Alderman Hallett has reminded me and us, we're going to give three minutes for each public participant. And I'm gonna just say that quickly in Spanish as well and let people know that if you would like translation, that we will accommodate for that and we will give some extra time for the translation process. Si quieren comentar en el tiempo de comentario público, les vamos a dar tres minutos y pedimos que sea respetuoso en lo que dicen. Si necesitan traducción, este por favor indícalo y podemos ayudar con esto y darles un poco tiempo extra para la traducción. So we're gonna begin with Katie O'Shea Kessler.
Hi, everyone. I actually have a map I would love to display and Tia has said that she'd be happy to display it for us, so I was gonna go bring the computer up.
All right, let's get this plugged in.
This doesn't count towards the three minutes, right? This does not count. Block has not started. Right?
Oh.
Marcus Cassett, go.
All right, neighbors. I'm Katie. I live in Ward Two, live right by the high school. This map that is displayed for you is showing all of the nearby communities that have an elected municipal clerk. Not a staff clerk, someone's appointed by someone or having the role combined with another position, the salary payroll of the city. If we toggle up, we can see the other one communities with a treasurer. Those are the communities that have an elected treasurer, much smaller. When we look at the difference between the communities that have a treasurer and a clerk, we notice that the ones that have absorbed that treasurer role in with their finance department have an elected clerk. There is separation of power there. And I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention just to show that it is really unique that West Chicago doesn't have either. It's very interesting. I just wanted everyone to noodle on that. I would hope that this council would try to change that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jonathan Wolfe. And let me also say that I apologize that we don't yet have our speaker system working. We are working on that. And in the meantime, I would ask that everyone's project as much as you can. And for tonight, we will just do the best that we can.
Good to know. My name is Jonathan Wolfe. I live in Ward One. I also represent We Go For The People. And you know, the first thing I was gonna ask for is a mic and speaker system, so visualizing the process. Actually, what I really wanted to say is I kinda just wanted to let all of you guys know, we are trying to put together like a town hall sort of get together situation. We don't have all the details worked out. We tried to get it kinda quickly last week, but it just didn't work out. We realized we would need to follow the Open Meetings Act and all that stuff. But I did send all of you an email. I hope you got it. I didn't get a lot of responses, but I will say thanks to Alderman Brano, Alderman Alcantara Garcia, Alderman Myers, Alderman Avina Soto, and Alderman Pareto Munoz. I apologize if I got your name wrong. Just thanks for responding. Sorry, we didn't get all the details together, but I just want you guys to know that we're gonna be reaching out, so please like check your email, respond. We'd like to get just, it's, the purpose is to have a little dialogue, not just like us commenting and not really getting any questions or back and forth. And the goal is to be constructive, not just yell at each other. Hopefully, there will be food because food makes everyone happy, but we don't have all the details of the location or the day worked out. I will try to reach out to you to get a date that works for as many of you as possible. And if anyone would like to help us, you know, like work together to make this happen and follow the Open Meetings Act and all the rules and stuff, we would, we would love that. I'll just stop there and let other people talk, so please check your emails. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Santiago.
Okay. My name is Kim Santiago and I've, I live at 708 Eighth Street, which has been Ward Two for the past 26 years. I lived in West Chicago for 52 years, so I was raised here. We have raised our children here and now our grandkids call West Chicago home too. I'm here to say to the city council how utterly disgusted and disappointed I am with the behavior I have witnessed here since Mayor Bobby was sworn into office almost a month ago. You are all elected officials and so is our mayor. He has a right to appoint a new city administrator and a new city attorney and this adolescent behavior by select council members is just ridiculous at this point and is costing our city more money because of your behavior and the squatters that refuse to leave. It really makes you start to wonder why so much pushback over something that is given in a mayoral election. I mean, all jobs end. Mr. Guttman had a tremendous run with a super duper salary and a great side of benefits. And he benefited greatly from our city, but again, no job is forever and this job is now done. The only thing I can think of why this council is so bent on keeping Gutman and Bond is there's maybe things that went on over the last decade or more that needs to be looked into. I think Mayor Bobby should seriously at this point look into getting someone to come in and do a forensic audit. Just a couple of things off the top of my head are the Kermit G settlement and the huge water debacle that fell at the feet of every citizen of West Chicago with absolutely no accountability from the city. You know, after a long time doing a job, you might start feeling entitled to do things that may not be in the best interest of our citizens. And I think maybe there are many things hiding from public view and that is why we are at the standstill. Because at this point, nothing else makes sense. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike Gunther.
Name's Mike Gunther. I'm from Ward Six, been a lifetime resident, Ward Six, and for 26 years. And you know, I love this town. This town's great. I grew up here. The eighties and nineties were great. The early two thousands were wonderful. Well, being a lifetime resident of this town, I know a lot of people. My roots are really deep in this town. Not only that, I've been a business owner on two separate occasions in the last 20 years in the historic downtown district. And I happen to know quite a few other business owners, other property developers from all different towns. All kinds of people that have tried to do business in this town and consensus is very clear to that. Change needs to happen in this town and it needs to happen from top down. And you know, unfortunately, it really is time to say goodbye to Mr. Guttman and have some new ideas here and you know, some change happening that promotes a lot of small business and just a more open idea. I mean, the last time I'm petrified to talk right now and like words are not coming out right, but the last time I stood up here to speak was when Mr. Guttman was proposing to demolish the Joel Wyant House, which we all know how terrible of an idea that was. I mean, that was awful. So you know, I'm compelled to come up here and speak my mind and just, I know that I speak for a lot of other business owners and just other entrepreneurs and people that have wanted to do business in this town and have just, they won't and they haven't in, you know, the last 10 years and this town is the most terriblest reputation. And none of these people will come up to ever speak or say anything because they're terrified of retribution. I myself was actually afraid to put a Mayor Bobby sign in my yard for fear of ordinance violations because I have also been a target of unwarranted violations and you know, having to have colored people come out and show them that they were in the wrong and it's just a pain in the neck. Once you become a target, it's, it's hard to get that off your back. And I have my own stories about Mr. Guttman, my own development story that I tried to do and he verbally strong-armed me out of the deal after I invested thousands of dollars in due diligence to try to follow through on a plan that I had to open a business in this town. It's just, you know, he's, he's bad for business and this, this town can be a really great place, but the change really needs to start from the top and you know, I really urge all you legacy aldermen to really reconsider it. It doesn't need to be personal between you and Mr. Guttman. This is just about the town and you know, changing for the better as a whole community. And like I said, it doesn't need to be personal and he should understand that, you know, his time is up and deep down inside, I know you guys know that what needs to be done and I know it feels kind of personal, but don't let it be. Just do what's best for this town, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kurt Jeros.
Good evening. Mr. Bobby, my name is Kurt Jeros and I'm a resident and small business director here in West Chicago. My interest in local city council issues has risen over the past several months. I want to recognize Alderman Beebe for his responsiveness and communication to me and to others. I applaud his transparency. I would go so far as to say that he has hopped aboard the new train that has arrived in West Chicago while some of the aldermen still have not. But it's not too late. At the Finance Committee, Alderman Hallett said, "We have to pay for things. We can't let them go." I think this is mistaken. There are items where we can cut funding from small one-off items to larger items like pensions. A shift is possible when we think about tightening our fiscal belts. Most of us commoners don't have pensions which pay us a salary not to work. This is the status quo mentality that I find disheartening. Government taxation continues to incrementally oppress workers. 1% here, a quarter percent there. Governor Pritzker eliminated the 1% grocery tax precisely because he recognized how that tax hurts the most, the people who are most in need. The wealthy can absorb a weakened dollar, the working class cannot. Taxation hurts wallets and weekly household budgets more than it hurts brokerage accounts. I wish to encourage the city council to get creative in how it considers revenue sources. Find ways to generate revenue appropriate to city infrastructure such as solar panels on parking lots or a city train museum with an admission fee for the tens of thousands of train enthusiasts in Chicagoland. Or add a registration fee at railroad days to contribute towards the cost of the fireworks. Or you could just start by cutting the $50,000 donation the city council makes to the event and let business sponsorships pick up the slack. Last city council meeting, Alderman Sheehan questioned why city council hasn't heard the frustration of community members. Let me share you, share with you my story. Back in the spring of 2024. I've been lived here for almost 15 years. I observed that 126 Wood Street had become vacant and had gone into disrepair. So I tracked the owner down who had fled to Florida. I had multiple phone calls with him, offered to cover his back taxes, liens, and sing a song for him so that I could preserve and bring back up to working condition the historic property known as Bob's Sultan Feeding. It could have become a great entertainment venue, including a golf simulator, pool tables, et cetera, just a couple of blocks from downtown or the high school. When I approached the city, I was given pushback that the city was already so far down the line, it would rather spend money to destroy the historic structures as part of their continued plan, which I find to be contrary to our motto. West Chicago, where history is destroyed and progress waits for a big time investor. Bob's Sultan Feet is gone and so is the tax revenue a small entrepreneur could have generated. Mayor Bobby, I want to thank you for your continued fresh ideas for the city and I will continue to support your efforts.
Thank you. Emily Hall.
Hello, I'm Emily Hall and I didn't bring cookies this time, sorry.
I was gonna give you four minutes if you had.
Second. Last week, I was my first city, or sorry, not last week, two weeks ago was my first city council meeting ever. And so I just wanted to express some reflections based on someone who's like new, very new at being involved in this kind of thing. Um, you know, last week I expressed my excitement for the changes that Mayor Bobby is bringing in. This week, I just wanted to say to all the aldermen that, I don't know that I speak for everyone, but like I believe in you guys first before I say my reflections. I believe that all of you want the best for the city. Like you guys have given a lot for this. And like the feeling may be very tense, but I think that the big thing that, that I took away from last meeting is that I, like, there is a lot of like lack of understanding of where y'all are at and why all of this is happening. Some things were really clear to me, like many of you are very frustrated with Mayor Bobby. That was very clear to me. Many of you prefer a particular interpretation of the law. That was very clear to me. Versus, you know, who is legally appropriately giving advice versus other people who are also legally appropriately giving advice. They've all passed the bar. They're all lawyers. They're all, you know, able to do that function, but there's a preference for one interpretation. Many of you feel extremely attached to the city administrator. That was very clear to the previous city administrator. Sorry, that was very clear. But the thing that like I just couldn't figure out is why? And like I want to hear and respect and like build that understanding with y'all. Obviously, I, I live in Ward One, so I'm gonna talk to my, my older people, but I would love to hear like in a town hall setting or something like that where y'all can share, you know, because otherwise the issue is that we're all left to fill in the blanks. I think we've even heard some people filling in the blanks with our own ideas of what's going on in your brains. You know, or is it that like his ideas are fundamentally against the idea of changing West Chicago, rezoning or more comity or more separation of power? Is that what you're against? Are you just annoyed with him so much that you're willing to like solve? Are you, oh, do you believe that something he's doing that we don't know about is wrong or dangerous or something about his agenda? Like, we do wanna know those things, the concerns that you've had. And, and I believe like we've heard from Mayor Bobby some of those concerns and his kind of ideas for concessions and stuff like that. And, and you know, maybe we would have also understood y'all's perspective too. If you had held the floor as much as he did. Or, but also every time you've held the floor last meeting, it was taken away from me because you were, oh, sorry, okay, you're taking, because you were pointing to something else that wasn't right. So all I'm asking is, we wanna understand. We wanna believe. We wanna really respect y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Luanne Husker.
Hey, everyone. I came up last meeting and I read the open letter and I also emailed each of you at your city email addresses with an update. We have 155, maybe one more, 156 residents who are willing to sign, who are willing to sign this open letter which addresses our concern about the actions of city council in trying to push through contract for the previous city administrator and disregard Mayor Bobby's prerogative to appoint a new city administrator and new corporate council. So I just wanted to update you all on the numbers of people that signed and each of you has gotten an email with the exact numbers of residents in your wards. Thirty-six residents for Ward 1, 24 for Ward 2, 17 for Wards 3 and 4, 16 for Ward 5, 12 for Ward 6, and 5 for Ward 7. I want to let you know that those of us who are troubled by your actions are not just a small isolated minority of the community, but a growing number of residents who are becoming informed, who are trying to read the municipal code and the state code for ourselves to see what the exact conflict is and coming to our own conclusions that the approach that some of you on city council has taken towards repeatedly obstructing Mayor Bobby's attempt to appoint new people to this role. That we don't think it's warranted, that, that we think Mayor Bobby has the right to appoint new people to these positions. So we ask that you would respond to your constituents, 156 people sent this open letter. We would like to hear a response to our concerns, particularly and some of the people in this audience have already articulated some of these questions. I don't, I'm not, I've not been privy to any of the conversations that have taken place among aldermen and Mayor Bobby in the past couple of weeks, so maybe some of this is already being resolved, but why is it so important for you to keep Mr. Gutman as the city administrator and Mr. Bond as corporate counsel? Why did you repeatedly try to push through Mr. Gutman and Mr. Bond's continued employment without the input of Mr. Bobby as mayor? How is it benefiting the city to be in deadlock when the majority of city councils refusing to work with the new mayor on the city administrator and corporate council issue? It's just taking so much time and we'd much rather be doing fun and exciting things like working on the redevelopment of downtown or addressing code or, you know, just things that we are concerned about as cities. And what is your response? The majority of residents in West Chicago who do support Mayor Bobby's decision in appointing new people to these roles? We are tired of being ignored and dismissed as uninformed. Maybe people on the sidelines and we would really like to hear your response. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Divitt.
Hello, my name is Tim. I live in Ward Six. First of all, I appreciate the audience tonight. One of the things that was actually disturbing to me was we have a thing called West Chicago Voics. It's a publication that I was just newly aware of. There's a lady named Heather Lynn. She's been trying to get some FOIA requests and the city FOIA officer from West Chicago keeps acting like they're not getting any emails. The city council needs to take this serious. My understanding is that I'm not a lawyer and I don't try to do is that any FOIA request, as long as it's regular, should be answered and it's got a specific amount of time. So the city, we need to respond to this. As you can tell, we had a lot of people and you know, I used to be on the zoning board and we would never get anybody that came to our meetings. And that being said, we need, you know, we want answers. We wanna know things. That's number one. Number two, I specifically request that Mayor Bobby, that we get a forensic audit. And I want the forensic audit to be over the Kermit G because there was a 14 million something dollar settlement. Most of the time settlements, like I said, I'm not a lawyer. Most of the times the settlement will give terms and conditions of what could be done with that money. Not that we could spend it however we want, not that we could go buy a new car or house or vacation home somewhere. We need to know where did that 14 million go? And if it was spent wrong, criminal charges should be filed against those individuals because if I spent money that wasn't mine, my buck would be in jam. Number two, if there's any course of action that could get them to repay any of that money, that should be on as well. The last thing that I'd like to say is, I was at the last meeting. And I gotta say, you guys are elected officials and a lot of you guys did a great job. You guys were very professional. But there were a couple that acted like they were second grade. I mean, my grandkids act like that sometimes. Trying to get my attention, hooting, hollering and everything else. And it was very, just very unprofessional, especially from us. Now, if you guys need to follow Robert's rules of engagement, why do we? Because if you guys are just gonna over, try to talk over the mayor when he's got the floor, especially a lawyer. I mean, come on, you expect us to stay quiet in our seats. We have things that we wanna say and guess what? You guys are getting paid to be up here or not. Worse, if you could all you want, but I'm not getting paid for that.
I got a fruit.
Oh, so do I. That's why I got water. But in, in all reality, it's upsetting for us because you know, I'll be honest, I wasn't involved. After I stepped down from the zoning board, I took a step back. I got involved in other things. When I started seeing what was coming out, I was like, God, man, we got, this, this is bad. We gotta get this fixed. And in my opinion, yes, the whole thing was Gutman, but also the city attorney needed to step away as well.
Thank you. Jane Short.
Good evening. I am a 13-year resident. Happy to say it's gone by fast here in the city of West Chicago. And I live in Ward Six. And first and foremost, I want to extend my congratulations to everyone as the newly elected officials. You know, we're headed into a new chapter. And one thing, when change happens, just like when you turn the page of the book, change is inevitable. However, as discussions were continuing and I kind of heard about them outside of, you know, reading the city council minutes and you know, you can get the pulse of what's going on from your neighbors. I know that there is concern about change and I think some of that stems from many people make their own narratives because they don't know all the facts and I sit in an unusual position because I used to sit on that side and I can tell you, I'm very excited to be just a resident because you guys are in for a lot of things coming up. But with that change being inevitable, as you're looking at vacancies, I do think you have to reflect on the job that those individuals that you're looking to replace did and the effect they had in our city. Chief Flurry has made our city, in my opinion, definitely much more safe. I see a police department that is so respectful when they are stopping individuals that are clearly in the wrong. Their professionalism is amazing. And just finding out what happened on May 27th at Thornton's and how our police officers responded. The leadership that they had to that call comes from the top and I think that that is something when you're looking to replace individuals, I don't know if you're gonna be able to replace what our chief has brought to the city. Our former city administrator, if he is former again, I don't know where that is, he also ran a city that ran in the black. We're not running in the red. They ran very fiscally responsible and I think that those are things that we have to look at. And we have to, if we're going to make that change, have individuals that are like that going into those positions. I think that a new energy, all of those things are very, very important, but as residents, we need to be careful not to make up our own narratives. Because there are things that have been put out there on Facebook and all other places that I know are not true. And one of them, which I think if there is a town hall, it could be shared, is about the water billing. I had just moved in when that whole thing started. I had no issue. I did what the letter said that the city sent me. You can pay or you can have a big bill at the end, really was what that letter stated. I paid a bill at the end of it. All I had a credit. Just as it comes to the narrative of our former clerk. It was done by vote, if I'm remembering correctly. That that position was kind of retired out of respect for their former city clerk Nancy Senna, who served the city, I believe, for well over 20 years. And that's why the working together, the message that I've heard from all of my neighbors in here is very, very important because we can't have rumors and things like that going on. We need facts and we need to work together. So guys, congratulations and thank you all so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Denise Collet.
Hi there. I'm Denise Collet and I'm a resident of Ward Six. First of all, I want to thank each of you for your time and service to our city. We know these roles come with challenges and we appreciate the work you do to keep West Chicago running. At the last city council meeting, one of the council members posed an important question to the residents in attendance. What is the change you wanna see? They mentioned hearing a lot of people asking for change, but not hearing many specifics. While I can't speak for everyone, I believe many of us share the same core concepts. We want a city council that truly listens to its residents, not one that pushes forward a second garbage transfer station when the vast majority of the community clearly opposed. not one that pushes forward a second garbage transfer station when the vast majority of the community clearly opposed that. We see new developments like a third standalone car wash. The proposed quick trip gas station that was to be behind another gas station at fifty-nine and sixty-four. And we wonder, is this the best vision for our city? None of these businesses encourage people to want to stop and stay in our wonderful city. People drive through West Chicago to get to places like St. Charles, Wheaton and Geneva. And while we're not trying to be like them, nor should we, we can offer something different. West Chicago is diverse, vibrant and unique community. That should be our strength, not our setback. Let's embrace that. We want to see real, meaningful change in our stagnant downtown. We're asking for more local shopping and dining, not just for convenience, but to help create a vibrant, welcoming community. Space we can all enjoy. We understand that ordinances exist for a reason and we absolutely respect the need for safety and structure. But it's sad to hear stories of businesses that conserve West Chicago only to end up in neighboring towns. We need our city councils to start thinking creatively and proactively. Asking the question, how can we make this work? Especially when a unique business shows interest in calling West Chicago home. Just because we've done things a certain way for the past twenty years, doesn't mean we should keep doing them that way. The status quo isn't working for residents anymore. It's time to embrace new ideas because one great business can spark momentum and lead to many more. The change we want is simple. We want a council that works for us, the community, not just city hall or personal interests. We ask that you listen, really listen to what your residents are saying. If you do, you'll hear a consistent message. We elected you to be our voice and while many of you have run unopposed in the past, the people of West Chicago are finding our voice and we are using it. We are speaking up about the kind of change and the community that we want to see and build together. So I ask each of you, please do what you're elected to do. Hear us, represent us. Every person in this room has chosen to make West Chicago their home and like any home, we want to see it thrive. And to grow into the best version of itself. That's the change we're asking for. Thank you again for your time, your commitment and your willingness to serve. We know the decisions you face aren't always easy and we don't take that lightly. But we ask you to lead with the best interests of the community at heart. West Chicago has so much potential and with thoughtful leadership, we truly believe we can build a city that we're all proud to call home.
Thank you. And finally, Bob Blouse.
Hello. My name's Bob Blouse. I'm a long-term resident, back yesterday. Worked thirty-six years on Gate Street, so I'm on Ward six. Congratulations on your win. The mayor campaigned campaigned on a message that resonated with people. It resonated with me. And that there's change that is needed. Most of the time I'm complimenting the city. I'll, I'll give you an example of this on kind of my time. Couple of months ago, the water main going for the fire hydrant in my front yard broke for the second time in thirty-six years. So what I'm saying is in our work, our pipes are going bad, right? The professionalism of the crew and was awesome. You know, I'm, I'm on the environmental commission. I served with Chris. You know, I complimented Dave Shaw. I, I, Mr. Patel, I apologize, I don't want to pronounce his first name. I complimented him, so I'm sharing that compliment too. There's one big exception that still makes my blood boil today. I'm a teacher, alright? I'm, I retired and I'm substituting at high school. But like Mr. Beebe, we got homes in northern Wisconsin and I spent a lot of time up there in the summer. So I have to have my mail forwarded a lot and the post office is not what it used to be. Spring break was a few weeks ago. I talked to the letter carrier and this is not my complaint, and pulled out the paperwork and delivered it, you know, to the post office. They still delivered my mail. Two years ago, when I had surgery and I stayed up in northern Wisconsin, they forwarded my first class mail, but I had two months worth of junk mail overflowing everything. Three years ago, they didn't deliver my mail at all. And there is the problem. I got home, you know, we start school in mid-August and we, I got home and I, I called Groot. And Groot, you know, said, guys, I haven't seen anything all summer from you, but I suspect that I owe you money. Which I did. I took care of her. Turned the clock two months ahead. End of September, early October, I get a letter from the city's attorney threatening to put my house on a lien unless I paid fines and courthouse and court costs. I had no idea what they were talking about, so I came and talked to code enforcement and told them the situation. I haven't been getting my mail. They talked to the city attorney. You couldn't care less the fine stood. You know, I wound up getting about two hundred and fifty bucks. It's not worth my time or my blood pressure, you know, fighting this. But in lieu of what happened last week, I thought I'd mention my experience. Now, two concerns. One, the city needs to change the way it does business. If you're summoned for court, you gotta make sure we get the message. Send us a certified letter. You would have never gone this far if I had known. And two, another big question is why? Why is the city the bill collector for a private company? Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that everyone who asked to speak has had a chance. We, we have another? No. Yes?
Submit one.
That was a clerical error. Louise Handel.
Sorry. I know everybody wants it to end. I just want to say, after reading my comments, I see that they meant some critical and harsh. This isn't an apology, but I think they paint a picture of what happens when information from the city is minimized, difficult to obtain or even withheld. My intent is to share my findings and pick the curiosity, speak the curiosity of doubters. In response to Alderwoman Sheen's comment from the meeting on May nineteenth, I'm paraphrasing, but it was basically the change, change, change. I don't understand what are these objections to Mr. Gutman? I don't want to go into too much detail because we've got enough time, but I am more than willing to address details if you want to have a discussion about that and my concerns with the Alderwoman or anyone else. In general, I heard from several people, including counsel, they say that they've received information from him on request and they've had positive interactions. I will say, I did as well. But that is his job until I found red flags and question marks. I continue to be dismayed at the results of my research and sadly, no one has disputed anything I've found yet. Perhaps the council got used to accepting the information Mr. Gutman and Mr. Vaughn gave them without question. Mr. Gutman acted in many roles, which created not actual, then perhaps potential conflicts of interest. The city administrator, some kind of FOIA connection, fiscal duties formally of the elected city treasurer, minute-taking record-keeping and other things of the elected city clerk. Additionally, it's my understanding that he may have served as the contact with whistleblower complaints. Where is the staff to go if he was the one involved? Somebody already addressed this. I randomly surveyed twenty nearby communities without going into any more detail. I found exactly the same thing. All twenty communities had a city clerk and the contact information on their website. Saving forty-five dollars, forty-five hundred dollars doesn't seem like much of a savings and I'd be curious to know if anyone else was compensated for those costs in the future. There are ways to resolve these things. Seek a forensic audit, ask questions. What happened with long-term employee separation agreements? Why are the documents incomplete or even missing? Get a detailed accounting for land acquisition, allocation of curmudgee and other money. What about other settlements and lawsuits that cost us thousands of dollars? Figure out the actual rules and patterns of closed session meetings and the process for destruction of those records. Please ask yourselves, what are the reasons Mr. Gutman and Mr. Vaughn are refusing to leave? The separation will happen, hopefully for us sooner than later. All I can see is clear financial gain and perhaps even potential cover-up. They are the only two people with such positions of power and knowledge. The ultimate reason our city is in this immediate situation is because of the contract clauses. And sometimes someone inserted those. I could only access records back to twenty seventeen, so I don't know the actual date. This clause is in direct conflict with the city's own policy and was voted on multiple times by city councils.
If you can.
I assume there was discussion with oversight in advance from the city attorney. Why did this happen? Why does anyone think they should stay? We need to work together. I live here, you all live here and we all want a great city. And I want to thank you for arranging for the live streaming for people who can't be here.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone else? Pasa alguien más? Anyone that didn't get to speak? Again, can not to go over clear enough. Alright. That concludes our public comments section. And we have two sets of meetings of minutes that we need to approve from our last two meetings on the fifth and on the nineteenth. And if you recall, the minutes on the fifth had some, some, according to some, some of the aldermen, some errors that needed to be corrected. And so we gave an opportunity for any of the aldermen to, to send any corrections into city staff to make those before this meeting. And so we will take the minutes from the May fifth meeting first. Do we have a motion? To approve the minutes from May fifth.
With the corrected.
Yes, what was sent out in this current packet is the corrected. Do we have a motion to approve the corrected May fifth minutes? Alderman Switek, second. Alderman Beebe, all in favor? Say aye. Okay. Now we will take the May, now we will take the May nineteenth minutes. Do we have a motion to approve as submitted? Alderman Stout, is there a second? Alderman Alcantara Garcia, all in favor? Say aye. Okay. The stand approved. We will now look at the corporate dispersment report from June second, twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Alderman Demas.
Yes, I make a motion to approve in the amount of four hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
How many times do I have to correct you?
Probably at least two more times. Let's call the roll.
Alderman Demas.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Beebe.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman Hallett.
Aye.
Alderman Carrato Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Murano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
The stand approved. And I would like the record to show that Alderman Hallett, I have gotten your name right tonight. At least I've got that going for me. So item number seven is filling our vacancies. Alderman Brown has submitted her resignation. And we do have a city proclamation, which I'm going to hand it over to Alderman Murano to read.
Okay. Great, thank you, Mayor. Alright, so whereas Alderman Brown was elected to office of Alderman Ward two in May twenty-seventeen and whereas Alderman Brown served on the infrastructure and public affairs committee and whereas Alderman Brown brought community concerns, even if the residents were not on her particular board, made sure accessibility to everyone in the board, to give them the best information as possible while working with the city administrator to make sure the accurate and timely information was communicated. And whereas Alderman Brown made sure that Ward two had a voice and raised questions on agenda items prior to voting on them to ensure she offered an educated opinion. And whereas Alderman Brown always did her best to consider budget-friendly decisions as a community while maintaining the city as best as possible. Whereas Alderman Brown ensured that our public safety personnel were properly funded to better ensure the health and welfare of our residents with our serious, our serious criminal levels being one of the lowest now in the region. And whereas Alderman Brown had an overwhelming experience and enjoyed from working with some amazing colleagues and staff, helped make the city a place which residents could be proud. And whereas Alderman Brown has been a part of the community and organization that has received many commendations and awards, including being one of the top ten cities to raise a family and being a spotlight for the city's commitment to the Monarch pledge, even raising some butterflies themselves with her homeschool children. And whereas the tenure of Alderman Brown always will be characterized by her readiness to confront tough issues, her knack for foreign thinking, policy setting, her willingness to place the public, public good health of personal interest in her ability to judiciously balance the needs of a modern community and all of its residents while still maintaining West Chicago's rich heritage with much treasured small-town atmosphere. And whereas Alderman Brown's hard work will continue to benefit municipal residents for years to come, her contribution will leave a lasting imprint on the city of West Chicago. Now therefore, for our city council, of the city of West Chicago, Duquesne County, Illinois, I did incumbent upon the city council and all citizens of the city to recognize and honor Alderman Brown for many accomplishments and years of unwavering dedication to the residents of West Chicago. Proclamation. This was originally on the thirtieth day of April twenty-two.
Thank. So this evening I wanted to introduce you guys to someone who I would like us to consider as replacements for Ward two. We won't be asking anyone to vote on anything, but just wanted to introduce this person. But Sergio Santiago is his name. He's a lifelong resident of West Chicago in Ward, Ward two. And he will be joining us by, by phone in just a moment to just introduce himself. And then I've asked him to put together a resume to be distributed to all of us this week and, and then when we come back together again, next meeting, then we could, we could look at a vote once everyone has had a chance to to find out a little bit about him and ask any questions that you would, that you would like. So we're having some technical difficulties, so the introduction will have to wait. But I will just say a little bit about him. He's moved here in third, third grade. So has lived here for around forty-five years in West Chicago, went through all the, the West Chicago schools, from Lincoln School to the middle school to the high school. He's had his kids go through our schools and now grandkids. He's a business owner, a local business owner and also currently works for District three oh three, I believe, Geneva School District. So I just wanted to let everyone know that he is someone who is being considered. And if you have any questions, feel free to talk to myself and I will get his resume to the council and distribute it for the public to see as, as well. Alderman Murano.
So at this time, so the role is considered over, right?
Yes.
So we are submitting applications beyond your.
Yes, if anyone would like to submit an application, they are welcome to do so. And maybe we can get our staff to put that on our website and we may even have some local paper, newspaper here that can put the word out that on that out as well. But that we will come back to you next, next week. Yes, Alderman Hallett.
In previous situations, a couple council members have helped interview whatever person there was. I was one of those over twelve years ago. That was interviewed and I was appointed to fill out vacancy. So I would like to see that implemented, not just a resume, but at least a couple appointed friendly question and just get some answers that we can't get just from reading something written on paper.
I, I think that's a very reasonable request and I'll be happy to set up an interview with any of you who would, who would like to. Obviously, we'll have to not break any OMA rules, so it'll have to be three alderpeople at a time or less, but I'm sure Mr. Santiago would be happy to to meet for an interview. Okay. Any other questions? Moving right along. We have our consent agenda. And again, for you, those of you in the audience, the, the, the purpose here is to bring kind of our normal doing the, running the business of the city into a inefficient mechanism for passing multiple items at, at once. This evening, we only have one item on there. And so what we do is we give an opportunity for the aldermen. First of all, if anyone would like to pull anything off of the consent agenda. If any, any one of them does so, then that becomes an item which we will discuss. So is there any alderman who would like to pull off our one item from the consent agenda? So we have ordinance number twenty-five oh zero zero one six, an ordinance disconnecting certain real property from the city of West Chicago. A portion of PIN zero one three zero four one zero zero one nine pursuant to the provisions of sixty-five ILCS five dash seven, excuse me, five slash seven dash three dash three. And So do we have a motion? To, all right, a bunch of them. I saw Alderman Beebe's hand first. And is there a second? Okay, Alderman Stout? All in favor? Next, we have our reports by Oh, good, okay. I don't. Do we have a, a report from the finance committee? Okay, Alderman Demas?
Ah, yes, I'd just like to state that right at the moment, we are in the process of trying to compensate for the state's elimination of our, our grocery packs. And in our discussions, we have the staff moving forward. We're finding ways to do that. So I'll state right now. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Demas. Alderman Murano?
Yeah, as far as the structure goes, we are in full construction season, so I'm sure you have seen our road getting redone. Our sidewalk getting redone, fire hydrant being renovated, all sorts of things that we've got going on right now. There are some consequences to construction. We have had the oil land that's out there, and unfortunately, as you drive through it after new roads getting put in, you get a little oil on our vehicles. Please feel free to reach out to myself. I've been partnering with the Hill on a couple of instances. But we have not a lot of them, but they do exist. Reach out to us later if your vehicle was damaged and angry by any obstruction.
Any other reports from committees? Next, we have unfinished business. And this evening, we have a presentation by a representative from the law firm of Ansel and Glink. And wanna welcome Kevion Craft Pepper here this evening. Ansel Glink is a law firm that West Chicago has does, done business with in the past. And I think in twenty twenty-three, I think we, we did about fifty thousand dollars worth of business with Ansel Glink. So it's one of the, the companies that we have that we have had a good working relationship with. And I've asked, I've asked Carolyn to give us a presentation this evening on some of the items that we are facing to give us sort of a, a legal framework for our discussions. Ms. Craft?
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm so sorry, but yes, we have to So I'm Carolyn Craft. I'm a partner with Ansel Glink. You can go have a little mini slide protected presentation here. So our law firm, we have about forty-seven attorneys in several locations. We represent two hundred and sixty public bodies. We represent about seventy-five municipalities as either regular or special counsel. And we do not have a horse in this race for the city of West Chicago. We don't represent the mayor. We don't represent the council. We don't represent the administrator. Although we represent your park district, the West Chicago Park District. But my law firm authors the Illinois Municipal Handbook. And we chew a lot of training from public officials, so I'm one of the authors on this book. And when I saw there was conflict going out here, I kind of have been talking to everybody like involved in this dispute to try to see what do we do to get past this law jam? One of the classes that I used to teach regularly for the Illinois Municipal League was called Council Wars and Power Plays. And we would always have like a standing room only crowd until I figured out, I think people are coming here because they think I'm going to give them tactical ammunition against the other side. But we have represented mayors when they've sued city councils. We've represented city councils when they've sued mayors. And we also serve as special counsel through the Illinois City Managers Association for city managers when they have conflicts with with cities also. We are also the attorneys for municipal clerks of Illinois. And I myself am a recovering elected official. I used to be a township trustee in York Township many, many years ago, which is Oakboro, Villa Park, Lombard, that area of DuPage County. I have known Mr. Bond for about thirty years. Since, say, I was three years old. And I've also known Mr. Jacobson for many, many years. So we kind of know all of like the players involved here. One of the kind of weird specialties that I have developed throughout the course of the years is conflict resolution for boards that are in strife. And I understand that maybe the new regime here is not fat enough to the best start. And if I can provide a word of hope, since I have spoken to Mr. Bond and Mr. Jacobson and also the attorney for your city administrator, what, the one thing that I'm hearing from everybody is that nobody really wants to fight. Everybody wants to find out a path forward, and that's what I'm hoping today that we can kind of work on. And I also understand that we have a very informed electorate and community who is clamoring for transparency and that they want to understand the underpinnings of any dispute here and maybe what the paths forward are. So I'm hoping that maybe we can come up with a path forward today. Now, my law firm has come in, in, in certain situations from municipalities where we have temporarily played an interim role to either help restructure the legal department or to reevaluate our legal department. So we served in that capacity in Evanston. And then Joe Liette, and then once we were done, we left and no one ever saw us again. And that was fine. We also reevaluated and restructured the legal department for the city of Moline. The weirdest meeting I went to was in Galesburg where they proposed to replace their legal department with AI. By the end of that meeting, I was always recommending that that city council do that. Next, next slide. So the current situation here, this is going to remind you all of your seventh grade constitutional classes because it talks about the branches of government and who has what power. So we have the executive branch, which is the mayor. We have the legislative branch, which is the council. We have a special role then played by your city administrator. And then stuck in the middle of all this, we have your staff who's trying to navigate daily things. We have the community who is interested in what's going on here. We have voters who voted for all sorts of different people in your diverse community to represent them. And we have a situation where we're in a transition. One of the other things, one of the other classes I teach is transitions in office, and that itself is a terrible topic sometimes because they can be bumpy. And they aren't and, and some, sometimes they're hostile. I mean, and this usually comes up in township governments, not cities and villages, but we have what I call like the flood and fire transition where there are no, no records at all left because the township clerk was keeping them in her house, which was flooded and then caught on fire or whatever. Luckily, we don't get that kind of transition here. But one thing that is common is the change is always uncomfortable. And there's always the fear of the unknown and you don't really know what's there. And it takes public bodies a while to coalesce. And one thing you shouldn't be afraid of is conflict. Because if a conflict in certain situations can be healthy. Because if you're in a situation where everybody, you have fourteen people that agree, guess what? Thirteen of you are unnecessary, right? So it's okay that you all have different perspectives and different viewpoints and might disagree about things. It's absolutely fine. Okay, next slide. Now, what I've heard from talking to all the attorneys involved in this situation is that each branch of government wants to be respected and each branch is feeling disrespected. And so that's one place where we have to kind of get together. And a lot of this is coming in over appointment powers and confirmation powers. But then I've also understand that there are some council procedural issues that there are conflicts related to. So we have to kind of get to the bottom of, of all that and see if we could find a path forward. We also have staff that needs clear direction because right now there's a little bit of turmoil between who's holding what offices and for how long and, and your staff isn't really, they're trying to perform their jobs, but they don't know who they're supposed to be listening to. So we need to figure out who has the power to do what? What is the current status of our administrator, our attorney, our police chief, and what are our options to move forward? Okay, next slide. So we really have to get to the bottom of who has the power to do what, because in order to put this together, we have to understand the powers and limitations of each branch of government in each office. Next slide. Now, to understand what the power and limitations of your offices are, there are kind of three things we need to know. We need to know what are the powers of the city? Are you home rule or not home rule? What does that mean? What is your formal government? What does that mean? And what are the powers of the individual office? And the way we figure out what those are is that the Illinois Municipal Code, which is the, the body of law governed, adopted by the General Assembly, that is like the overall parameter that sets forth everybody's powers. But you've also taken action and adopted into your city code. So what does the Illinois Municipal Code say? What does your city code say? Now, you cannot change provisions of the municipal code while you have legislative power. So that's just a note in the back there. Next slide. So home rule or non-home rule, let's just talk for a minute about what that means, because sometimes you might have heard those terms, but not really understood them. Home rule means that your government can exercise any power it wants, as long as the state says you can't do it. Non-home rule is exactly the opposite. Non-home rule entities, they have to be able to point to a law that says they can do what they want to do. So West Chicago is a home rule unit. Units become home rule units when either they have over twenty-five thousand people in population, or if they've adopted the system by referendum. Next slide, please. So some limitations that you have on home rule powers is that you can't do anything that the state says you can't do. And you cannot change your form of government. So you can't take powers away from the different branches of government through a legislative enactment like an ordinance unless your voters pass a referendum changing your form of government. Next slide, please. All right. There are six forms of municipal government. This is the next thing we have to talk about. Which form are you? There are six forms in, in Illinois. One is the aldermanic city form. That is the form that you have. A lot of other municipalities have the trustee village form. They have a village president. There's a really unique form called the commission form. There's a manager formal government where the manager is the chief executive officer and you have to adopt that by referendum. There are some special charters, and a lot of these are older municipalities that existed almost when our constitution was being drafted. The weirdest special charter I read lately was for the city of Geneseo, which says women can't vote. That's, so we need to fix that one a little bit. That's a little And then I like, I like talking with Kevin because when I give speeches with him, he can give the mails. And I can give the rec. And then, then there's also something called a strong mayor form of government. And a lot of times towns think they have a strong mayor form of government because their mayor is powerful. But really, in Illinois, we only have about five strong mayor forms of government. So your form of government, if you're ever reading the municipal code, is aldermanic city form. Next slide, please. Okay, so in that form of government, in the executive branch, the mayor's the chief executive officer. He's responsible for seeing that laws and ordinances are enforced and he has the power to make sure that employees perform their duties properly. He has access to all records. He has veto power. He has the ability to vote in certain circumstances. He has appointment authority. He's the chair of council meetings, but the mayor is not supposed to be a dictator. He does not reign by proclamation or edict. Now, I don't know if any of you were listening to the news and ever followed what was going on in the village of Dalton. That was an interesting situation where that mayor kind of believed that she could govern by proclamation and lock the council out of City Hall or the village hall and everything like that. But the mayor is not a dictator. That's one, one of the things we have with all forms of municipal government are these checks and balances. So there are balances that the council, the council has over the mayor. Okay, next slide, please. Oh, great. It's a really tight font. And this is what I did for this is I actually copied out of your city code what the city code says about the mayor and the mayor's powers. And I'm going to try to get glasses so I can actually read what it says.
But you put that in bigger print for someone who can't see that?
I really should, yes. So there's a lot of what your city code says that mirrors what the municipal code says. So you say, for example, that the mayor's the CEO of the city. Oh my goodness. Okay, I'll just read this. The mayor is the chief executive officer of the city. The mayor shall have all powers to perform of the duties which are prescribed by code and ordinances of the city or by established custom, and she'll take care that all laws and ordinances are faithfully executed. And then what you've done is enumerated some of those duties. And one of those that I highlighted there is to appoint and remove with advice and consent of council the city administrator, the chief of police, and the corporation council. That's out of your own city code. Next slide, please. All right, that brings us to the legislative branch, which is the alderpersons and city council. Now, you are the legislators. You are the policymakers for the city. You have the ability to determine your rules and procedure for your meetings. And the powers of the city councilmen and the aldermen are collective, not individual. I had a weird situation once where an alderman thought they could go out and there was a paving contract going on in one town, and the alderman thought they could go out there and just tell the person, well, while you're here, could you put in a basketball court next to City Hall? No, we don't have individual powers. They're collective. And they, and aldermen also have access to the records necessary to carry out their legislative duties. They have the ability to create offices for the city, and I highlighted, they have the ability to, they have approval and consent to appointments made by the mayor. Now, the limitations is that the city council doesn't microwave, microwave, micromanage the day-to-day operations. And there's an appellate court case. It came up actually in the township law context, not in the municipal context, which talked about, well, what does this, what is the chief executive officer? What is the role of the CEO related to employees? And the appellate court in that case said, well, it's really strong. The legislative branch has checks and balances over there, but the executive branch really runs the day-to-day operations. Next slide, please. Okay, and this is what your city code also talks about, then. This is related to your administrative branch. So you have a city administrator, which the city has conferred with powers. And the powers that you've given your city administrator are pretty common. So this, the chief administrative official also really runs your day-to-day operations. So your, your city administrator is responsible to the mayor and the city council for the efficient administration of the city. And the city administrator is responsible for the recruitment, selection, removal of all employees whose positions are not subject to appointment by the mayor. That's what your city code says. At the bottom, I kind of summarize. So it's oversight of the day-to-day operations of the municipality with the mayor, supervises employees not supervised by others, and also performs other duties designated by the corporate authorities. Corporate authorities is defined as the mayor and the alderman. Next slide, please. Okay, so let's talk about appointments here because this is where the first bit of controversy is arising. This is what the municipal code says, the state municipal code. The mayor or president, as the case may be, by and with the advice and consent of the city council or board of trustees, may appoint, and then it designates a bunch of officers. So the three offices you have in controversy right now are corporation council, police chief, and city administrator. Next slide, please. Therefore, the mayor can appoint the administrator, corporation, council, police chief with the advice and consent of council. Next. Slide please. Now Now, here's the big question. What happens if there is no advice and consent? Do the previous officers hold over? Mayor make temporary appointments? Let's figure this out. Next slide, please. All right. One of the issues to look at is what the law says about holdover officers. So this again comes from the Illinois Municipal Code. And it says vacancies in municipal office are filled in the same manner as appointments are made. And the city council may prescribe the duties defined the powers, which is the term of office of appointed officers. But the term of office, except as otherwise expressly provided in this code, shall not exceed that of the mayor or the president of the municipality. Next slide, please. This is what your city code says about that. If you read the highlighted part, this has to do with city administrator. The appointment shall be for written contract for a period of time not exceeding four years and which must terminate no later than the end of the term from the then-presiding mayor. Now, you adopted a resolution in twenty seventeen giving a, wait a minute. What was twenty seventeen and created over? You adopted a resolution awarding a contract to Mr. Gutman. And that provided that the term of office would be four years. But it had a rollover provision. It said if notice wasn't given by the previous administration, then it would continue over for another term. So there's a contractual obligation that was committed to by the previous administration through that contract. And that's one of the kind of unknown gray areas here. Did that, did the previous administration have the legal authority to enter into a contract that could possibly bind a new administration? So just keep in mind that that's a gray area. Next slide, please. All right, office of corporation counsel. You have here, you create the office of corporation counsel. That's your main legal department. You also, I understand, have a prosecutor and a adjudicator. And unlike the previous one, this doesn't say when the term of office for the corporation counsel expires. So your city code doesn't say that. But the state law still says that the term of office can't exceed the term of the mayor. Next provision, please. For next slide. Okay, chief of police, we have the same language here that we get for the city administrator. So the appointment must be by written contract for a period not exceeding four years and must terminate no later than the end of the term of the presiding mayor. Next slide. Okay, so here is another section of three point one dash thirty dash five, which talks about the appointment of officers. And it starts out by saying, well, if you have an appointed officer that resigns, that person continues in office until their successor is chosen and qualified. Doesn't define what qualified means. Then it says, if there's a failure to appoint a municipal officer or if the person appointed fails to qualify, the person filling the office shall continue in office until his successor has been chosen and has qualified. If an appointed municipal officer ceases to perform the duties that uphold the office by reason of death, permanent physical or mental disability, conviction of a disqualifying crime, or dismissal from or abandonment of office, the mayor or president may appoint a temporary successor to the office. Or, uh, yeah, to the officer. Next, next slide, please. So what the gray area is, and this is why people love lawyers, right? Because there's these gray areas. We have a situation here where the terms of office have clearly expired, but the statute doesn't say whether the expiration of a term of office and a mayor's unconfirmed appointment constitutes a failure to qualify. And really, I can make arguments probably both ways on this. Um, so there's this little bit of a gray area. Next section, please. So this isn't the first council where this issue has come off. And there have been a history of situations going back way before the first case I've cited here, which is an Illinois Supreme Court case, where people have kind of been duking out appointment powers. And I want to tell you about what happened in this case called Pecos versus Slako because that was kind of the first case that really looked at some of these things. And then there's been a lot of cases following that, and I will spare you all of the cases. But I want to give you the framework because it will help you all understand kind of your collective powers. So in Pecos versus Slako, the city of Berwyn and the village of Oak Lawn both had problems after their election. And in Berwyn, the aldermen decided they were going to remove their public works director, their treasurer, and their director of streets and sanitation. And they immediately were then, and replaced them with people that they wanted. The mayor then sued them. Uh, and the village attorney, they, the village attorney said, hey, you can't do that. So then the aldermen in Berwyn said, okay, then you're fired too. And so then they replaced the village attorney. Simultaneously, in the village of Oak Lawn, the village of Oak Lawn has a manager form of government. So that's different than your type of government. And the village did several things in a two-month period of time. First of all, they get, their ordinance said that their manager could appoint a village attorney. Well, they didn't like that. So they passed an ordinance saying that the attorney was not something that the manager could appoint anymore. And the court issued an injunction against them. So two weeks later, they created the office of corporation counsel. They said, okay, if we had to keep village attorney appointed by the manager, we'll keep that. But now we're going to create this office of corporation counsel to perform all the legal work of the city. And then two weeks later, they realized, well, if that's an office, the mayor can appoint that office. We don't want to do that. So they said, all right, corporation counsel is going to be an independent contractor group because we have the ability to contract with lawyers, so we're going to turn it into that. Then two weeks after that, they abolished the office of village attorney. So it's really clear what they were doing was embarking on actions to try to control this whole process. And then ultimately, they adopted an ordinance that the president and the board voting jointly could employ attorneys. Oops, I didn't finish that. I should say as independent contractors. Next slide, please. Ultimately, the Supreme Court said you can't really change mayoral, uh, oops, appointment powers or managerial ones without a referendum to the form of government. And the legislative body cannot encroach on the powers of the head of the government. Next slide, please. Okay, the next thing that chronologically happened is there was a little battle in the village of Rowley Beach over whether or not the mayor could temporarily appoint a police chief. And the council said the mayor could not do that because, and it was a little bit different there because they were arguing that under the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners Act, that that was the only entity to appoint. And the mayor filed, a counter claim said, no, I have appointment powers and you can't just take those away. I have to be able to have a government that functions, at least even on a temporarily basis. And the court there issued an injunction against the trustees for taking away the mayor's appointment power in the appellate court upheld that. Next slide, please. All right, that brings us to nineteen ninety-eight. And in the late nineteen nineties, there were a lot of wars going on over appointment powers. And this one came out of the village of Wesmont. And the village, the mayor of Wesmont removed the village attorney and did that, did so without talking to the village board. And then he never came forward with an appointment for a village attorney to seek advice and consent. He just simply started assigning legal work to another law firm without talking to the village board at all. And the trustees then said, well, wait a minute, you can't do that. We're going to fire the law firm appointed by the mayor. And then because there are abilities to enter into contracts, the village board entered into a contract with a different law firm. The mayor then vetoed the resolution and the trustees then overrode that veto. Next slide, please. So the mayor then filed a lawsuit against the trustees, wanting to say that the resolution the trustees passed and the contract hiring their own law firm was void. And he sought an injunction preventing the trustees and their law firm from operating under the contract. And they all, he also wanted a writ of mandamus, which is a legal word for like a court order to compel a public official to do something, requiring the former firm to turn over the village's files. Next slide. So ultimately, the trial court enjoined the trustees and the former law firm from operating under the resolution, but went back to the mayor and said, hey, you can't just not do anything. You have to bring forth candidates for confirmation by the board. Otherwise, the whole role of the board in the appointment and the consent, you know, the consent process is invalidated. So the trustees appealed that. Next slide, please. This is what the appellate court said. Following the removal of the previous village attorney, Mayor Burke delegated responsibilities of the village legal work to this new law firm. At no time did Mayor Burke seek the consent of the board of trustees for this delegation of work to the Rafferty firm. Although the defendants, who were the trustees, challenged the mayor's authority to take such actions. Section three point one dash thirty dash five D of the code plainly permits the mayor to appoint a temporary successor following the dismissal of a municipal officer. And then they cite the Rowley Beach case that we talked about, as well as another case from earlier. Next slide. Now, the appellate court continued to say, based on a review of the code, we are aware of no statutory authority or ordinance that would authorize the trustees to unilaterally terminate this temporary assignment. As already noted, the code conveys no independent power to the board of trustees to remove appointed municipal officers, nor have the defendants provided any support in their intention that they were authorized to take such action. For those reasons, we believe there's a fair question as to the impropriety of the trustees' termination of the law firm appointed by the mayor. Next. So ultimately, the appellate court upheld the trial court's award of injunctive relief to the mayor. Now, if you stop the story here, it sounds really one-sided, right? Because it sounds like, well, how come the mayor just ran a law firm into the village without? Oh, I mean, that really kind of nullifies the statute, the advice and consent thing. So what do we do about that? Next slide. The appellate court continued then on here, um, saying that, well, we have to look at this other section of the municipal code that says we have contract powers. Because if we have the ability to contract with a law firm, how do we reconcile that ability with the appointment powers? And so the trustees argued that the contracting section of the statute gave the trustees the authority to independently contract for outside legal services, whether or not there was an appointment of somebody who had to turn. Next slide. All right, so the court looked at that argument and then I highlighted the part that says, we don't believe that the contracting section of the municipal code permits the trustees to do so uniformly as corporate authorities as the mayor and trustees. So if you want to contract for somebody, the mayor and the board must act together in undertaking a contract for new consulting services. Now, here we're talking about the village president's trustee form of government, but the same statute would apply to city council, mayor, your form. Next slide, please. Now, the kind of compromise here was that the city council has the ability to hire professional consultants and attorneys to provide advice to the aldermen, provided their work does not encroach upon the work of the city attorney, as long as there's funding to do so. And there's another court case here, Sampson versus Graves, which came out of the city of Harvey. And in the city of Harvey, what they said is, all right, mayor, you can have your corporation counsel. But if we do not have confidence in your corporation counsel or if we don't trust that person and we have special advice that we want a second opinion on or there's a conflict situation, we want to be able to hire our own person, not controlled by the mayor's office. So in Harvey, they passed an ordinance saying the head of the finance committee had the ability to pick a lawyer for the city council there. And the court said, well, you can't necessarily just give all those powers to one person on the city council. But the council does have the ability to contract with an independent attorney, advise them in the narrow functions of their legislative capacity. Next slide, please. Now, one other thing that people need to be aware of. While your mayor has not opted to remove officers, he can. He has the ability to do that. But since he's trying to broker a peace agreement here with everybody, he hasn't launched this grenade. But he does have the ability to remove appointed officers. So he technically, if we're taking the position that Mr. Gutman is carrying over, Mr. Bond and the police chief, the mayor does have the ability to remove them. The council would have the ability by a two-thirds vote to restore the person to office. Next slide, just so you're aware of that. So here's the current situation we have. We have the terms of the office of administrator, corporation counsel, and police chief has expired. The mayor has not removed them. He's declared the terms expired. He's made a temporary appointment of officers to fill the vacancies. The mayor has filed a lawsuit against the administrator, the law firm, and the aldermen, all in their official capacities, just about the powers to get this resolved. And as I told you many, many slides earlier, this is a gray area of law. This is not necessarily well-defined. Um, or either side, because there's a little bit of a gap in the statute. There are really compelling arguments on both sides of this situation. Next slide, please. So option one is let's continue with the lawsuit and let the chips fall where they may. Next slide. Now, can the city council remove an appointed officer without the approval of the mayor? No, there's no legal authority to do that at all. Next slide. All right, so summary, the mayor can remove officers and make temporary appointments to the offices without the advice and consent of the council. The mayor makes a permanent appointment only with the advice and consent of the council. The council can't remove appointed officers without the approval of the mayor. The council can contract for outside legal services if the mayor and the council agree. And the council can hire legislative counsel to advise the aldermen on legislative matters, but not to perform the city's legal work unless approved by the mayor. And based on all of this, my partner Stuart Diamond and I in nineteen ninety-nine wrote an article called Lawyers, Lawyers Everywhere, because that's really kind of what seemed what's happening here at the law. Next slide, please. Okay, so a council cannot permanently withhold consent to appointed officer or courts will view that as an encroachment on the mayor's power of appointment. But the mayor, on the other hand, cannot make a temporary appointment permanently of appointed officials or the court's going to view that as an encroachment on the council's power to consent. Next slide. So then there's the issue, can we enter into a contract with the administrator without the mayor's approval? And the answer to that, for all of the reasons that we just talked about, is no. The administrator is an appointed officer and the mayor must make the appointment. Once he makes an appointment that's confirmed, the council has the ability to vote on a contract. Next slide. All right, so now I said action one is just continue with the litigation. Action two is a possible peace agreement, which is multi-pronged. So let's talk about this. The first prong is Mr. Gutman. Um, today, the mayor and Mr. Bond and Mr. Jacobson and I conferred with Mr. Gutman's attorney about parameters going forward. So the previous administration entered into this contract that we've talked about with Mr. Gutman. And per the city code, that agreement couldn't exceed the term of the mayor, but it did commit the city to certain payoffs of accumulated vacation time and things like that. Some of them are required anyway by Illinois law. So the status is that the mayor and Mr. Gutman and the attorneys have been working on a scenario. Well, Mr. Gutman will have a new contract for a different temporary position with the city until January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. This agreement would satisfy the payout terms committed to by the previous administration. And the proposed contract will come before the council for approval. I'm pleased to report that after this afternoon, we are about ninety-five percent of the way there. Everybody agreeing to this scenario. So hopefully, if, this, I understand from all sides, this is a kind of significant concern. But I think if Mr. Gutman agrees and everybody agrees to this, this is the first part of the path forward. Next, please. Peace agreement relayed to the city administrator. What we would propose is that the city would appoint and the council would approve Tia to serve as the, and we had to see if Tia A wants this position. And so maybe we need to have her head examined, but okay. Just serve as the temporary city administrator for a period of time not to exceed six months. And then during the six months, the city would do a search for a new city administrator. The mayor has heard loud and clear that the council has felt disrespected with the appointment process. And he said, let's open up the process here. Let's do a search. And, you know, and I like the suggestion that Alderman Hallett had about with the vacancy for the alderman. Maybe have some people do that. Maybe what you could do is have a couple of people involved in a process of culling applications for city administrator and then bring the top three candidates before the city council. Ultimately, again, the mayor would have the appointment power. But if the council is filled in on the processes that goes on, there's a little more buy-in. So the mayor then make the appointment that the council can confirm and reject. And that would be the process there. And it's a very standard process in municipalities. Next slide, please. Um, part three, the police chief. The mayor's working on a new agreement with the current police chief. So when those terms have been resolved, the mayor will appoint the police chief. The council would approve the appointment. A contract will come before the council for a vote. That's in the works, so that stabilizes that office. Fourth part, please. Okay, there's two parts related to legal counsel. First of all, there's currently litigation pending between the mayor and the city related to the mayor's greenhouse. And a law firm needs to be appointed to represent the city in this matter. Really doesn't make sense to have the mayor appoint a law firm to sue him, right? Um, that would be highly suspicious if the mayor once said, I want this for on the other side. No. So what we are suggesting is that we will come up with three independent municipal law firms that have no ties to West Chicago. And then the city will pick among those three. You can, you know, interview them and decide who you want. And then those, that law firm will kind of take over the transition of that matter. Um, next, please. Okay, in the meantime, the city needs legal representation. So what we're suggesting is that So what we're suggesting is that we would come in. If everybody in the equation is familiar with or comfortable with us, if you're not, and if you think there's another law firm that you would rather get fine with us. But approve us as inter-incorporation council for a period not to exceed six months. What would, what we would like the ability to do is issues come up is give you, have the ability to assign some of the work to Mr. Bond and Mr. Jacobson. Because everybody has kind of expressed on the different fashions who they're really comfortable with and why. We don't necessarily need, you know, to take on a lot of other legal work. We just want to help you guys stabilize things. And then during those six months, and it wouldn't exceed six months. If you guys could get this done in two months, that's fine. You'll do a search for a new corporation counsel, open up the R of Q process and the same thing. Interview the law firms, see who's out there. Everybody can apply. If Mr. Bond, Mr. Jacobson, whoever wants to apply, everybody can apply. And then the mayor would make the appointment, the council can confirm or reject. And hopefully, you know, what the courts are going to say is that they want people to agree. And while I kind of walked you down a very small portion of memory lane with respect to these disputes between. Mayors and councils. What I didn't go into is like the five cases that were filed in different jurisdictions that never made it up to the appellate court. Like in Island Lake and Oak Forest about people fighting over appointment powers. Because really, when these cases end up before the judges, judges don't like them. And they're going to say, why can't everybody just sit along? Next slide please. Okay, so what are the next steps if we're actually open to resolving this? Well, what we would do is finalize the agreement with Mr. Gutman, which will come before the council for approval. The lawyers would prepare a settlement agreement related to the pending lawsuit and bring that back before the council for approval. And if this is going to resolve, it needs to get resolved pretty quickly because the lawsuit that was filed is seeking emergency and like injunctive relief. And the lawyers have to file things within a matter of weeks. So the sooner the better on this. The council would then pass an ordinance amending the city code provisions related to corporation counsel so that other attorneys could be used for special legal work. And then. I understand there's also an issue about procedural rules. And that's important also. And we need to kind of work together on procedural rules that are acceptable to the mayor and the council. What I'm hoping, most municipalities just adopt Robert's Rules of Order. One of my partners, Stuart Diamond, prepared like a very abridged rules of order for some cities that some cities have adopted. But I'm hoping that once you're past this hurdle of these appointments things and this initial bumpy start that everybody got off to. That who creates the agenda and how things are recognized will kind of just iron itself out because. The aldermen have the right to put things on the agenda. The mayor has to recognize people for making motions and votes, and I think. That the mayor's indicated he plans to follow procedural rules. I don't think you need to over-lawy yourself with really complicated or unique procedural rules. I think standard ones will hopefully help you coalesce once we get back to the point of everybody respecting everybody's rules. Next please. What if we don't reach an agreement? Well, the mayor will then likely take action to formally remove the appointed officers and continue his lawsuit. The council will probably file a counterclaim in the lawsuit. The administrator might file a lawsuit. Turmoil continues as far as who's holding office. And it's much, it's going to be much harder for you to fill any of your appointed positions because everyone is going to view you as crazy town, right? And administrators talk and lawyers talk and, I mean, I've worked with municipalities that had like no applicants for city administrator because people on the state asked them. Who wins this lawsuit? Now, usually lawyers won't say. With a hundred percent certainty who will win, but I will say with a hundred percent certainty, who will win in this scenario will be the lawyers. Because they are all going to make money. Who's going to lose? It's going to be the taxpayers, right? Because they are funding all sides of this dispute, and I think they're a team, no matter what war you're with. This isn't what people want to do, and this isn't what they want fun. All right, next slide. Okay, we're kind of done with our little crash course on the appointed to elected, the appointed offices. I wanted to talk about your alderman vacancy. And once again, in microscotted font. This, this is the procedure for filling the vacancy in office. So what it says somewhere in there is that the mayor will put forth a person, if the person is qualified, you have to make a decision within thirty days. Do you vote down that person? He puts another person up, you have thirty days to consider that. If you don't like either of those people, the mayor gets to pick one of the first two people, and that person will hold in office until. Either a confirmation is given or the election. Now, the alderwoman that vacated her position, was she at the beginning of a four-year term or was she in the middle?
Beginning of a four-year.
Okay, so her office will be up in two years.
It's four.
No.
Two, two, two.
It will be, because there's a vacancy in that office, there will be an election in two years. So in two years, they would fill the two years of the unexpired vacancy. So. That's kind of my presentation. Do any of you have questions? If not, one of the options you have is, I mean, we kind of, you know, we have been informally talking about these parameters and. When I recall Mr. Bond, he's like, well, I had to make fourteen phone calls, you know, so. One of the things you have the ability to do is go into a session to talk about the resolution of this under pending litigation tonight. You have the ability to do that. We at least wanted to do as much of this as possible and open because we know you have a community that's very interested in all of these issues. So. Are there any questions you have or what would be the next steps that the council wants to take related to this? Yes, sir.
Right now, who is paying you?
Nobody, actually. We are.
Because nothing has come before us as far as making any payments whatsoever. We just want to make sure we know where we're at on it.
Yeah, so right now, I am not representing anybody. Nobody has hired us. And, you know, part of, when you write a book like this, you get municipalities and lawyers throughout the state calling, asking questions all the time. And we don't, we don't charge them. Lot of this because I've taught classes on it before and written articles on it before. I wanted to update kind of some of the materials that I had. But I thought if I could come in here as a public service, it ultimately would be great if the city, I mean, I've spent many hours trying to resolve this situation. It would be great if you guys ultimately agreed to pay us for this, but if you don't.
I got a couple dollars.
But remember, you get what you pay.
Sit down, friend.
We'll pass the hat.
Other questions? If not, thank you for sticking around and thank you for letting me address you.
I, I'm gonna just open it up if anyone in the audience has a question. Yes, so is the concern that. The contract given over from the previous administration. Is still active in spite of its seeming or surface level conflict with the. The section two dash one twenty-one about the terms, the terms limited to those four years. So is that where this conflict is really at head, where one side says, no. The city administrator position expires every four years. And others that say, no, it's a contractual thing. Is that where this rub is happening?
That's, that's a part of it. So the contract that was entered into said. If it was not, if he was not given notice of cancellation so many days in advance, it would automatically roll over for another term.
But doesn't, wouldn't that. By definition, it means that the potential new mayor, whoever it would have been. Wouldn't have the ability to give the warning. Because the new mayor wouldn't have any powers to issue that.
Right, which is why it's a gray area, which is why we're hoping that won't end up in litigation also because it's. And the previous administration tied the hands of the new administration. The answer is probably no. But on the other hand, now you have contractual rights for an employee, and so. Like I said, we're ninety-five percent of our way into resolving that matter. So we'll see, but we look the now ahead.
Okay, I'll take one more audience question and then we'll move on. Yes? Ms. Handel.
If I understand you correctly, if you were hired by whoever hires you, you would work for six months.
Well, we.
About six months, just six months, but then what's the process for really getting a city attorney?
So what I would recommend is that they do a request for proposal. Many cities are doing this right now because a lot of them have changed for the elections, right? And so, like we just submitted a request to Orland Park, they had like twelve law firms send responses to that. So, so there would be a process. So they would submit proposals. Everybody could have access to that information. As I said, I like Alderman Hallett's idea about maybe a screening committee of a smaller committee going through with the mayor. Ultimately, the mayor would get to pick, but if the council is a part of the process, they might understand why the mayor picked someone over the other. And six months, I hope would be the outside of that. We have to give like, the aldermen enough time to respond. Make many use enough time to evaluate or whatever, the mayor enough time to decide. So. But, but that stabilizes things for that six-month period of time at least. Same with the city administrator position.
Okay, council members, any other questions?
I have a question. Um, you're talking about the temporarily position for Mr. Gutman. That can be like a public facing position or is that like, he's tucked in the city hall somewhere or like?
Well, I think he would work on special projects and be available for transitional questions and consulting and things like that. But there would be a different city administrator. He would not be the city administrator.
And I think we can, I think we can say that in the agreement we're working out, he would be offsite. That's the, that's one of the points that's actually never been in contention. Okay, so. Alderman Morano.
Yeah, so again, back to the six-month timeline then. Let's say at that time. We haven't figured out an immediate term, so what then happens?
Well, I mean, if we were a temporary appointment, if we hold over, well, we ourselves would recommend that we aren't severing permanently. But I'm thinking, what I've kind of heard.
I think that continues to be one of the big concerns by our council, but honestly, is that much of this will be just a temporary permanent appointments. So how do we avoid that?
All right, there is, there is an attorney general opinion from nineteen ninety-four from the city of Oak Forest. And the city council in Oak Forest said, all right, we're going to limit a mayor's temporary appointment powers. We're going to say you can make two successive appointments of thirty-day periods. But after that, you have to bring in someone new. And the attorney general at that time, it was Roland Burris, he implied that that was, that was an appropriate exercise of the city's authority. So the city council would have to determine, do you want to make a limit to temporary appointments? And if so, what would that time of mouth be? Because sixty days. That can still create turmoil.
Oh, I agree. I get it. Still need to kind of mull everything over, but yeah, as far as timelines go, I don't know if thirty days is the right choice, right? I mean, things like specialty decisions like this can take longer than that, but the concern again is that sixty days turns into ninety, turns into four years.
Well, that's why what we're hoping is that if this is an open interview process, so, you know, like if you get twenty law firms that. Apply, you might not want to interview all twenty. But maybe a committee can come, you know, say, these are the five we want to consider. And then bring all five. It's very common to have all of them before the city council, even when the mayor has the appointment power. And, you know, maybe the council will say, all right, you are comfortable with these three, and then the mayor will pick from those three. Or maybe the mayor will say, I'm comfortable with that, and this one, this firm, and then everybody else will have an upper level of comfort with that firm. There's a lot of qualified municipal law firms out there, so, yeah, I mean, I think you should find somebody.
With how active you guys are and how dedicated you are to your community, there's no reason why this should go on for six months.
Oh, I, I agree, but I don't know if you've noticed, but there is a little disagreement on, you know, for.
We've been talking with every, you know, talking with the people that are involved in it, and I'd be surprised if it goes, if it goes to that, every shit down there.
And. If the inherent question is. Is the mayor going to attempt to appoint a temporary person and keep them for four years? I mean, I have no desire to do that. That would be, that would be counterproductive in every way. So, yeah, at the end of the day. I mean, some trust is going to be required on both, both sides, and if you think I am a, you know. Some sort of. Evil, evil genius who's got this master plot to. Appoint people temporarily and then hold them over permanently, well, then that kind of puts us back to the only option is litigation. But I, I have no interest in doing that. Alderman Hallett.
Just a clarification on the. Resignation of Alderman Brown. Understanding, but we kind of heard back before two years, and she's up for reelection. That's the way it goes. Was she just elected again?
She would have still elected.
Yeah, so she.
Anytime you were appointed to fill vacancy, it's a two years and then you're running.
Yeah, so she, so.
But I mean, it seemed like we had some yelling four, some yelling two, because I went through the head as well. So if I had to do it, everybody else.
So if it's a four-year term, then the appointment would be for two years. In two years for the election, someone would run for their two-year unexpired term.
Right, exactly. Thank you. I'll give you four dollars now.
What about me?
You haven't done anything.
My money.
See what I'm up against here.
Mr. Hallett is pretty tough.
He is tough.
An alderman.
Alderman Hallett, that was not me. That was not me.
Have you called him?
Yeah, you owe him now. Uh, council members, any other questions?
No other question, just a comment. During my lunch break today, I was trying to read our city code, which even as an educated member of this body, it can be tricky. And I know our public struggles with that because what does this mean? And I did see that our code does allow for appointment of additional attorneys when necessary. And that made me feel better about this entire process. And I guess I actually do have a question, Mayor Boebi. So I did print out your five items. Where do we go now with our wonderful presentation? Thank you very much. In taking action items for our next meeting.
So my thoughts, I mean, you see, the second point here was kind of the status updates. So my thought was to kind of, kind of just. Spend a limited amount of time with the timer clock going. On each of those five items and kind of update and discuss. With, with any questions. So I would suggest. That we take eight minutes on each one of those items. And if we determine that, you know, there's one of those items that we really need to come back to. Then we come back to that at the end, but just, just to move us forward. With the background that we have all had, and I just want to say. We have amazing public here that has sat through almost two hours of civics class and is. Appeared to be mostly awake back there, so we appreciate your commitment. To the community. But that, I'll just put it out there. Would you guys? Be comfortable with taking eight minutes on each one of those items? Alderman Stowe.
We may need to take a five-minute break. We're going to be doing five eight-minute presentations and just do a bathroom break first.
That sounds eminently reasonable to me. Yeah. So.
Yeah, please.
Motion to recess for a five-minute bathroom break. Yes, Alderman Demus. And a second, I saw Alderman of Minnesota on favor. I was gonna say, and that was when, that was when you were. Wishing we had newer bathrooms.
You can go upstairs.
It's probably too late now. I could not find it in time.
Sorry. You are now Alderman.
I have been called worse.
It's written in the law. Need to like dim the lights like they do in a theater after the admission to get everybody back to their seats. I'm gonna give thirty seconds. I know that we don't all walk the same speed. Well, let me just say again. That I appreciate the the tone and. I, you know, I don't want to. Count my chickens before they hatch, but I, but I feel like we're. We're getting somewhere. We have some, some pathways forward that. Would. Would require us to. Work together and like we were told, conflict is not in itself a bad thing. Conflict can be handled poorly, but. Conflict can bring, can bring good. And that's the system that we have is designed to. Force us to work together. So. Well, uh, we are going to seven, eight minute clock and. At the end of eight minutes. Tia or myself are going to kind of make hand signals and wrap it up as long as nobody's abusing that. We won't have the the alarm on, but. We'll start. We'll start. Alderman Ferguson, since you have the paper in front of you, would you mind reading the the first item on the, and that list for us? And we'll spend eight minutes on that one.
Number one, the mayor will ask the city council to choose an outside special counsel to represent the city in the matter of the mayor's request for administrative review. Of the twenty thousand dollar administrative adjudication ruling against him. Ansel Glink will propose three firms and city council can choose one of them.
Yes, Alderman Davis. To be honest with you, I don't know that we're going to need eight minutes. I would feel that we move right ahead with this. I approve that.
Okay, so there's, can we take an informal vote? We'll do just kind of a thumbs up if you're comfortable with that. All right, I think that was all the. All right. Yes.
Now, that's just on the council portion of it, correct?
Excuse me?
I'm the, I'm the attorney, correct?
Yes. Okay, um, we're gonna reset the clock. Thank you for cutting through that for us, Alderman Demus. Uh, would you please read number two for us?
I'm so excited. I printed this. It was a very exciting lunch break. Number two, the mayor will support the idea of city council hiring Pat Bond or their attorney of choice. And appointing said attorney as legislative counsel in the matter of the disagreement over the boundaries of executive and legislative powers.
Any comments? Want to take an informal vote on this one? Is this, is this one, one that you have more doubts about?
Let me see, we take the vote.
All right. All right, informal thumbs up if. Yes.
I just, I just want a clear understanding of what the proposal is, and you would want to expand on that a little.
Sure. Do you have any specific questions that I can address?
No, just a, oh, go ahead.
So, uh, the. Um, the city council hiring Pat Bond. Um, for our attorney, is that assuming that that? The. City attorney then would be Mr. Jacobson.
Well, maybe we should go to number three first, because I think that addresses it. But. Is it three or four that addressed? Four, thank you. Any objections if we go ahead and read number four, since it kind of answers that question a little bit?
No.
Okay, number four.
Number four, city council will agree to approve Ansel Glink as interim corporate counsel, maximum of six months. With the understanding that Mr. Jacobson could be one of the attorneys appointed to represent West Chicago. A search would also be conducted for a permanent replacement for corporate councils. City council would also agree to approve Mike Canucko as interim administrative adjudicator for a period of up to six months. A search would also be made for a permanent adjudicator.
And just one comment on there. Mr. Canucko in the administrative adjudicator, I apologize that that wasn't something that I verbally spoke about in the last meeting, but I wanted to get that into the discussion. As well, since that is one other, one other position that. That the mayor appoints and. Attorney is like, correct me if I'm wrong, because I got this understanding actually. Uh, from Mr. Gutman, who told me that it is my role to to appoint the the administrator adjudicator. So I thought that should be in the discussion as well. Wasn't trying to, you know, sneak one in there on you or anything like that.
I have a question.
Sure.
During the presentation, the remark was that Ansel Glink. Potentially. Uh, Mr. Jacobson and Mr. Bond would all be part of this. Interim. So is that truly all the players or is it just limited to Mr. Jacobson and Ansel Glink?
So my. My vision and understanding of that would be. That. Ansel Glink would be our. Corporate counsel. And as. Was kind of presented in the presentation that we would make some adjustments. Um, to city ordinances to allow Ansel Glink to subcontract out some of the, some of the work. Now, my, what I had envisioned, Mr. Bond. Mr. Bond's role being was limited to the legislative council. And so, um, my best understanding of that was essentially that Ansel Glink, Ansel Glink would be. Kind of the, the umbrella and that under that umbrella. Um, if the council says we would like to have. A legislative council and we would like that to be Mr. Bond, then that would be. Something that I would support. And that's where we're going back to number two. Ansel Glink is a large firm and we wouldn't necessarily expect to see the same person every time. But, uh, you know, there is, there, there is a significant amount of legal work that our city engages in. Um, each year. I, you know, there's la- last year or over the last five years, our. Corporate counsel has done about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year of work. And so. Uh, that, uh, that work could be. Could be subcontracted essentially if Ansel Glink decides to to do it that way, they could. Uh, send their own people that would be somewhat, somewhat up to them. Uh, how they, how they wanted to do it, although I I I would assume that if we had. Someone that we especially wanted to have or something, that there would be some give and take there. But my. Intention was that Mr. Bond's role would be in that legislative council role, if that's, if that's what you guys wanted.
I I guess I didn't understand that from what you had said. It seemed to me because. Mr. Bond has previous knowledge of of several cases that have gone before us. And for him to be a part of. Just the overview of things that are going on within the city. Along with Mr. Jacobson and with your oversight, but I was, did I misunderstand that? It's what you were saying or?
Well.
I mean, I, that's what I thought I heard.
This is structured however you guys want it to be to ultimately make it work, right? I mean, so there's not. There's not one size fits all, and that's kind of what we need to piece together here. So it, I, what we don't want is chaos until the situation is stabilized. What you don't want is three legal opinions on. Everything that comes before the council. We frankly could do everything. Without using Mr. Bond or Mr. Jacobson, but you guys have a level of comfort with them. So we would need to figure out what, what, what does that look like? So what I said was, put it under us and and scan the role of the council and let us just assign things to people. What the mayor is saying is a little bit different than that, which is that he would prefer Mr. Bond to be limited to advising legislative capacity in the event that there's a conflict. So we need to figure out how, you know, what will work for everybody.
And and that's where I, I, yeah, I I think that's accurate, what you said. And what what I had proposed originally on that paper is a little bit different than what you proposed tonight. But, uh, you know, we met this morning and I certainly would anticipate that there would be some transition process where you don't just like. Dump a bunch of files on our desk that, but that you would be involved in. Kind of transferring these cases over. But I I I don't think that Ansel Glink needs like their handheld through those cases either. I'm sure, I'm sure that there's some normal protocol when you're.
Right.
Transferring a case from one.
We were recently rehired as the village attorneys in Lyle, and we, we asked their previous law firm, send us the list of the, what was currently. You're currently handling, and we'll see if it makes sense for us to take it over or for you guys to keep it. And I think just about all the cases, we said, oh. It's going to make more sense if you just finish up where we were maybe started. Now, I know in the instance of the greenhouse stuff, which was already number one, all right, that's a separate story. But there's, there's that kind of transition. And I mean, we don't, if if your stuff doesn't, you know, it's going to be, yes. Going to cost us more to get up to speed than them to finish it. We don't even need to take that over. So there's usually that kind of dialogue during the transition time.
Uh, so we're approaching seven minutes, thirty seconds. So item number two was. Can you read number two for us one more time?
The mayor will support the idea of city council hiring Pat Bond or their attorney of choice and appointing said attorney as legislative counsel. In the matter of the disagreement over the boundaries of executive and legislative powers.
So, uh, there is obviously some question as to the mechanism of what that piece would look like if it is. Under the umbrella of Ansel Glink, which is now kind of. Become part of the discussion. You know, where, when I wrote that two weeks ago, it wasn't quite as clear and laid out. But do you guys want to give just an informal thumbs up or down on that one? Let, let's, let's say, you can do thumbs up, down, or abstain, okay? So.
One more.
Yes.
So. You know, obviously, if ultimately you come up with a law firm that everybody has confidence in, then you might not necessarily need legislative counsel. So for example, we were appointed legislative counsel in the village of Lyle in nineteen ninety nine, and they called us twice in the last eight years. There was no conflict with the village attorney most of the time. So you might ultimately not even need that, or you might create that office, appoint Mr. Bond, and if any questions come up over a period of time, he's always available. To hop in and answer that. So that's one of the things you have to kind of figure out.
Yeah, okay. The other idea is we could just combine these two and give it sixteen minutes and then, and then do the thumbs up and thumbs down. On both items two and four at the end of the sixteen sentence.
My question, can I ask some questions or?
Yeah, are we okay with kind of combining sections two and four? Okay, let's do that.
So my question is. Who? Who's in charge if we have a. Legal question and we ask Mr. Bond. But then. He says one thing. And the city attorney says a different. Who wins?
Well, normally you wouldn't. There shouldn't be a lot of times when you will be asking questions to two different law firms. It would only be because normally the city attorney is the advisor to the city, and you can't assign work to legislative council that's city work. So that's why the way that that is worded is that if it has to do with your powers. Like, if it has to do with who, who has the power to do what? And I I really think that on most things, we would agree with Mr. Bond with respect to, I mean. With respect to who has executive power, who has legislative power, especially given that right now everybody's trying to work together on this. So I don't think this is going to be a situation where there's going to be all these conflicting, that would kind of defeat the purpose of everything then.
Right, it's very confusing.
Alderman, I've been so.
No, I just wanted to put on that. He had a question.
Oh, thank you. Any other questions or comments on either items two or four? So. Yeah, I I mean. Ultimately. I think that. Where we're trying to get to. Is that. We are putting out this. This RFP where we're. Best for proposal where we're looking for. A law firm to become the permanent. Become the permanent law firm. And as I said, like, you know, I'm. Perfectly happy with. Having you guys involved in giving advice in that process. And just like with the aldermen, you know, meeting. Together, interviewing people, all those kinds of things. Just so. You realize that at the end of the day, the appointment. Is the executive branch. And then. I realize that the. Approval. Or disapproval. Is the legislative prerogative. But, you know, it it can't be. Advice, yes, but. You have to keep Mr. Bond is not advice. That is essentially. You know, telling me what to do. So I I do, I I have made it very clear that I believe that the voters want me to make a change. And so that is kind of the, I mean, you guys, like, let's do it together, like, let's go through this process together. But the answer can't just be. If you don't pick our person, we're not going to participate. Because that's then you guys taking on the appointment. And conversely, I'm not going to just do it without you. Because that would be me not getting your advice. Yes.
That would be like the same thing would go with Mr. Jacobson then. In terms of your end of it, that wouldn't be your only recommendation of the council when they, when the time came through.
Can you, can you expand on that a little bit?
So you've made it clear that you will be in charge of obviously bringing someone to council for approval. You would bring someone beyond Mr. Jacobson to the council for approval, respect.
Yeah, we would, we would. Presumably go through a process in which we would. That we would put out. And an RFP, we would kind of figure out any changes that we want to make in the ordinances to. So that it makes sense to what what we think it should be. Um, and then. As I think was said in the thing, you know, Ansel Glink is free to put their hat in the ring. You know, Mr. Jacobson's free to put his hat in the ring. Mr. Bond is free to put his hat in the ring. And. Uh, you know, I, I will have to kind of talk through the specifics of the process. But if you're asking, have I actually made up my mind and this is all just sort of for show to go through, and then I'm going to pick Mr. Jacobson? No, that's not what I'm doing. We would go through a legitimate process. Which would involve legitimate advice from the council. Um, and then a legitimate selection ultimately. Now, you guys may be involved in kind of narrowing it down. And then you guys would have the prerogative to. Thumbs up or thumbs down at the end. Okay.
My question.
And just to let you know, we're at fifteen minutes and fifteen seconds. Okay, all right, come back to it. So. Should we take two and four together or take them separately? Let's take them separately. Okay. So give me a thumbs. So give me a thumbs up and then I'll ask for thumbs down and then I'll ask for still thinking about it. Okay, just.
What's number two?
Hiring Pat Bond in legislative council.
Yeah, or, or.
Or attorney of voice.
Yes, yeah. And basically me saying I will, I will back that up if you guys decide to do that. We're not saying that you have to do that, but that's me saying that if, if, if you guys want to do that, that would be something I would, I would support. Okay, thumbs up, you are comfortable with. Okay, thumbs down? And, and a couple middles. Okay, all right. All right, fair enough. Number four, would you mind Alderman Birch Ferguson reading that one one more time and vote on it?
City council will agree to approve Ansel Glink as interim corporate counsel for a maximum of six months. With the understanding that Mr. Jacobson could be one of the attorneys appointed to represent us. A search would also be conducted for a permanent replacement for corporate counsel. City council would also agree to approve Mike Canucko as interim administrative adjudicator for a period of up to six months. A search would also be made for a permanent adjudicator.
Okay. Do you guys want me to take the adjudicator thing out of it since that's kind of new or is?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, I just wanted to get that into the discussion, so it's part of it. So let's take that one, take the adjudicator piece out for a moment, okay?
Bring it back around next city council.
Yeah, sure, yeah. I just kind of wanted it on the, on the agenda in the discussion that this is something we'd be looking at too. Okay, so thumbs up? Okay, thumbs down? Are those down or sideways? Okay, all right. Were you sideways?
Sideways.
Sideways, okay. Or sideways. All right. Item number three, Alderman Birch Ferguson, you have become our designated reader.
City council passed my COVID infection. City council will agree to approve the mayor's interim appointments of Tia Matino, city administrator and chief flurry, chief of police for a maximum of six months. This allows us to move forward on chief Flurry's permanent contract and move forward on a search for a new city administrator.
Oh, oh, you guys are ready to vote. I know, okay, yes, Alderman Murano.
Yeah, so I think that a lot of this, and I, I don't want to assume anything, that's why I'm asking.
Sure.
Is predicated on the discussion with Michael stuff, correct?
Yeah, that's actually in order five.
I, I understand, but like, I, I just, agreeing with the approval of TB, the temporary one. I feel should go along with whatever agreement you end up with, Michael. And I think that once that's presented to us, both parties agree, I, I don't think you're gonna have any objections here.
Okay. And, and, and just, yes, and just to give you some, some broad outline of kind of where we're at in that agreement. Because I think there's a number of points where we've actually been pretty close for a while and there's just some details that we're working out, but essentially the agreement that we have utilizes Mr. Gutman had just about nine months. If you put together his vacation time and sick time accrued. Now, it's, it's one quarter of the sick time, which is the amount that is, is then awarded to an employee when they separate. But if you take that one quarter of his sick time and his vacation time, he had accrued about nine months. And so the, kind of the key thing here is that he's using those nine months to get to his retirement goal. And so essentially, he's happy because he remains an employee until January thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. At which point he retires. And I feel like I can say that I've represented the people of West Chicago well because we're not, essentially, we're not giving more money to him, we're giving him what, what he was owed from his previous contract. And so there's a few other, I, I would say more minor details. But that's kind of the heart of it is, is that is that we, we take those nine months of paid time and use that to get him to retirement. We would have had to pay that anyway, so it kind of answers the question of, are we double paying someone? No, we would have to pay that anyways. And it allows the new council to get out of this hamster wheel and get on to the business of of finding the person who's going to help us is going to help lead our city in this new chapter that we'll write together. So that's that's, and, and we've got three other people that were in that discussion this morning, but was that a fair representation of the kind of the, the principal items?
Although I want to do the one wire reading thing, there's no guarantee it's gonna be resolved, it's
It's not a
Down close.
Yeah.
But you've been in that situation before.
Yeah, I, I think you said ninety-five percent. It's not a written contract, it is, it, it will not be official until it's approved by the council.
Uh, yes, so I guess then my question would be then pursuant to that happening. Then we would move forward with this, you know, being, and then I mean, I, I, yeah, I, I, I guess that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
So can we put that in with that language for the way you have written, it's two separate things?
Oh, just combine four and five, uh, three.
Whatever.
Three and five essentially? Yeah, yeah, uh, yes, pers- yeah, put at the end of number three, basically pursue it to number five.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, just make sure that the two are interrelated.
Yeah.
And I think.
Yes, Mr. Murano. Alderman Murano, that all does. I'm in trouble. I got, I gotta pay Alderman Hell two dollars at the end now.
Man, I love the photo.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think the best idea too, it seems like we're semi-close on a lot of these. I, I would think that the best thing to do is if we can organize these and put them in a more of a formal agenda type item manner that were very specific on what it was and what all the details of what we're agreeing to are. I mean, we could potentially look into passing some of these.
Yes, and it will have exhibits like the contract.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so this will have a question, this will be for next meeting on June sixteen, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Are we ready to do a thumbs up, down?
Separately or by?
Let's combine them together. I think, i- is everybody more comfortable with combining three and five together?
As long as we've got a contract that's signed.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, that one that's with flying colors. Hey, thank you guys for I, I feel like we're, we're making some progress here and just to reiterate, my commitment is to is to do this together, so. I think that kind of wraps up number ten. Eleven, we don't have any new business. Announcements, June fifth, that is in what is that, Thursday?
Thursday.
Uh, infrastructure committee. That's, is that, what time is that?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven. June ninth, development committee.
To six p.m.
At six P M, thank you. Development is at six, correct? June sixteenth, public affairs.
Six fifteen.
Six fifteen, okay. All right, yeah. All right. Yes.
On course, there is a shredding event this Saturday.
Okay.
Uh, in the parking lot. The train station, we're gonna be collecting several things, please look at the website.
Great, any other announcements? Alderman Hall. Yes.
Statement about change.
Yeah.
Positive change is good, radical change is stronger. And that's all I got to say for today. Till next meeting, I'll find.
Well, I think number thirteen, mayor's comments, I just have about three hours of prepared statements. Yeah, that joke never gets old. All right, so I just want to say thank you to the, the community. And you guys are here at nine thirty having listened to us for a long time and to, you know, a, a civics lecture and you, you guys care and, and I appreciate the attitude with which you shared all your comments, the thought that you put into it. Many of you had written notes, some of you had, had it all written out, I mean. I mean, it's really amazing that we have this many people that are putting this much time into it, so let's, um, let's try to capture that energy in a bottle. And in the ensuing months, when we get out of this hamster wheel, keep coming and help us do the positive change, the, the good kind of change that we are, that we were wanting to do. And again, my apologies, I did have several requests from those who, who had some degree of hearing impairment last meeting and we are working on getting the sound system resolved because I know that, 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 that really impacts some of you. And my apologies that we couldn't get it this time. But we're, there's a number of things that we're gonna talk with staff on, on, on getting just kind of things smoother. Talking about translation, that's another big one. And, 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 and the live, live stream, so again, more to come that it's, you know, having the community involved is what we want. We want you guys, we want an informed community. We want an involved community, we want a community that, that takes ownership of things that are happening. So thank you, too, all right? We have on the thing, a, a executive session if it was needed. Am I right in thinking that it's not needed at this point? If you guys, if you guys want to have a closed session, it's fine with me, but.
No, I want to go to bed.
Alderman Hallit has spoken. And in this case, we're gonna yes, yeah, I, 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 yeah, I was just gonna bang the gavel and say that Alderman Hallits but we're just gonna pass it, it's not matter. But we're gonna, we're gonna go through the proper channels to close the meeting. Do we have a second? Call that when I tied and went to Alderman.
It went here, there, there.
Oh, 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 okay. We'll, we'll say that was all, I got to see it. Hi, all in favor?
In the next nine, not so late.